April 4th, this is the regularly scheduled monthly Wald Lake Schools School Board meeting when we welcome you and may we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our first agenda item is City of Wixom presentation, I will turn it over to Dr. Bernia.
Mr. President, members of the board, good evening, and I will just as quickly turn it over to Mrs. Omer.
Thank you, and the City of Wixom held its first gala on March 8th, 2024. In addition to 50/50 raffle and a silent auction, the gala designated Wald Lake Schools McKinney-Vento homeless program as their beneficiary of the donations collected at that event. Mrs. Patty Harthoon, Student Services Manager, and Mrs. Tammy Hunter, McKinney-Vento Liaison, presented at the event and spoke about the services that the McKinney-Vento program offers as to our students and our families in our district that are homeless. They presented at the event the funding uses and provided information on the homelessness in the community. We welcome Mrs. Kathy Vanegas from the City of Wixom, she come up, and Mrs. Katie Skidmore from Farmington, and Tammy Hunter, our homeless liaison, to do the check presentation. We thank you so much for your.
Good evening, can you hear me? My name is Kathy Vanegas, I've had three kids go through Wald Lake Schools, Wald Lake Western class of 2012, 2015, and 2020. I'm also the Recreation Supervisor for the City of Wixom, and this year, our department had a goal of creating an event, the Wixom Gala, where not only could our residents come out and have a fantastic evening, but we could also raise awareness about how to help the needy in our community. So, we thought that the Wald Lake Schools McKinney-Vento Program would be a perfect partner in this endeavor, and talked to Tammy and Patty, and they agreed, and they were very kind enough to come out to our event on March 8th and give a little presentation about the McKinney-Vento Program, how it supports students in our community through residency uncertainty. They did a great job, thank you ladies so much for coming out with us. Our community really stepped up and helped raise funds, supporting the cause of helping these childrens, these children. We raised funds through Katie Skidmore's Caitlin Events, Katie Lynn Events Silent Auction, she's got a new business and she did a great job with her silent auction for us, that was awesome, thank you so much Katie, and from direct donations from the people who were there. So I would like to present to the Wald Lake Schools District, District's McKinney-Vento Program, this check, giant check, representing $575 that we raised at our first annual Wixom Gala.
Thank you so much, ladies.
Okay, we'll move on to Golden Apple Awards, Dr. Bernia.
Thank you, Mr. President, Brian Dennis, where are you? Brian, come on up to the most comfortable spot in the entire room. Right on the WL, sir. Whatever you're comfortable. Okay, totally valid, totally valid. Tonight's first Golden Apple recipient is Brian Dennis, a contracted IT Service Staff Member working in our Educational Service Center right here in this building. Brian was nominated by Kelly Halyback Gott's Informational Technology Manager because Brian always has a positive attitude and is willing to help with any task. He is very knowledgeable, but uses his quiet and supportive demeanor to help some of the most challenged users feel confident, I happen to be one of them. Brian is always willing to help and is the first one to jump into action with any IT task that could use creativity or some extra hands. He's always innovative in seeking solutions and is relentless in testing features and ensuring our systems run smoothly at a high confidence level. Brian has been called on to spearhead our district's phone transition, think about that for a moment, and as a strong leader through the project's challenges, he has handled each tough conversation with respect while making sure our needs are met, he follows up continuously and often repeats our needs to vendors so they are clear of his and our expectations. Brian is a true troubleshooter, he does not feel or take on the role of a contracted service member, but rather the role of being part of our IT and Wald Lake family. Thank you, Brian, for being a jack-of-all-trades who takes pride in support services provided to our district, and it is our honor to recognize you this evening. Brian Dennis. Cheryl Tacy, where are you Cheryl? Cheryl, come forward. Right there in the most comfortable spot in the room. Tonight's second Golden Apple recipient is Cheryl Tacy, a substitute staff member for our IT and Student Service Departments here at the ESC. Cheryl was also nominated by Kelly Halyback Gott's Information Technology Manager and Patty Harthoon, Student Service Manager, because Cheryl always has a positive attitude and is willing to jump in and help with any task. Our IT team appreciates that they can call on Cheryl as an extra hand to assist the department in many tasks related to our district's sudden need for distribution and collection of technical resources during remote learning, and now our secondary-level one-to-one device program. In her nomination, Kelly said Cheryl is someone we can trust to knowledgeably communicate with students and families during our multiple distributions and collections. She often worked late evenings or early mornings without hesitation to provide relief to our IT staff's long hours. In her nomination, Patty shared Cheryl's ability to move quickly, communicate efficiently, and work well within the Student Services Department is immeasurable. She can see the full picture and engages herself in processes so she has a full understanding. Cheryl is always willing to follow processes and give guided suggestions while she completes tasks to ease the workload on others to complete projects. She is self-motivated with everything she does. Cheryl always makes sure she has a full understanding of our expectations, and she always communicates with support and a smile. Thank you Cheryl for being a problem solver and an extension of the staff in two of our important family-facing departments. It's our honor to recognize you this evening.
Okay, next up on agenda, Betty Campion Support Person of the Year Award, Dr. Bernia.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Betty Campion Distinguished Support Service Award was established in 1990 to recognize the many contributions support persons make to the learning community in Oakland County. The award is named in honor of former Oakland Schools Board Member Betty Campion. Mrs. Campion served on the Oakland Schools Board of Education from 1978 to 1992. Prior to serving on the Oakland Schools Board, Mrs. Campion served 10 years on the Board of Education right here in Wald Lake, and for 21 years as one of our PTA members. So this is an award that we're really proud of here in Wald Lake, because the namesake is one of our own. Nominees of the Betty Campion Award are members of a local school district's support staff who go above and beyond the call of duty in creating a supportive learning environment. It's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Seth Tableau, Principal at Walnut Creek Middle School, to introduce and recognize our Wald Lake Schools Betty Campion Award recipient for the 23-24 school year. Mr. Tableau.
Thank you, my name is Seth Tableau, and I'm the Principal of Walnut Creek Middle School, and I'm so excited to recognize Ann Moore as the Betty Campion Support Person of the Year. Ann started with us at Creek last school year as a Responsibility Room Supervisor, which traditionally has been a position overseeing students with behavioral concerns. Ann has transformed this position and has become a pivotal mentor and ally in the educational journey of our students. Ann's unique approach to student discipline through mentorship and restorative practices has not only transformed the Responsibility Room into a hub of personal growth, but has also significantly reduced the recurrence of behavioral issues at Walnut Creek. Ann's dedication to building meaningful relationships with students allows her to address their struggles and support their academic needs. She truly helps our students to learn from their experiences and grow from their mistakes. Furthermore, Ann does not stop with the support that she offers students in the Responsibility Room. Ann's leadership with our iReady Intervention Program at Walnut Creek is nothing short of remarkable. She is the linchpin of the entire program. Ann diligently manages student completion reports, she tracks all of our data to ensure the success of the program. Her efforts have been instrumental in fostering an environment where students are not only held accountable, but are also given the tools and the guidance that they need to succeed. Ann, your impact extends beyond the walls of the Responsibility Room and into the heart of our entire school community. Your unwavering commitment to our students, their well-being, and their academic growth has made our school a better place. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do for Walnut Creek, and congratulations.
This is an overwhelming award, and I am humbled by it. I want to thank my family, my friends that came here tonight, my coworkers. I couldn't do this without the help of the staff that I work with. They are all wonderful, they are wonderful to work with, I've never worked with such nicer people, and the two that are the most wonderful is Mr. Tableau and Mr. Pipkin. I watch them in the school all day long, and they engage with our kids there in the cafeteria during lunch, they, they are just amazing to be with, and it just spills over into the whole school, so I thank you for your hard work, it's, it's nice working with both of you, and that includes 20 years at Henry Ford Hospital too, so you're the best supervisors I've ever had, thank you so much, thank you, thank you very much for this.
Okay, our next agenda item is Girl Scout Life Saving, Life Saving Award Medal of Honor, Dr. Bernia.
Thank you, Mr. President, in the room tonight with us, there are a lot of heroes in the room, but there is a true hero in the room tonight. On July 6th, 2023, a member of our Wald Lake Schools family was put into the unimaginable situation of having to act fast to save the life of a loved one. Tonight, we will learn of a remarkable story of courage, resilience, and the power of preparedness. It's a story that reaffirms our belief in the extraordinary capabilities within each of us, especially when we're faced with unforeseen challenges. It's my pleasure to welcome Michelle Brandon from Clifford Smart Middle School to introduce this student and recognize her with the Girl Scout Life Saving Award Medal of Honor. This is Brandon.
I'm actually from Wald Lake Northern, but I have a daughter at CHS, and we have Girl Scouts at Commerce Elementary, and that's who I'm proud to introduce tonight, a Girl Scout that I've had the pleasure of working with a lot, and to accompany her is her grandmother, who she was in the right place at the right time, because you'll hear in a second, Ayanna was able to help her that night, and then also our Wald Lake Service Unit, Girl Scout Director Laura Baldwin, they'll be presenting Ayanna with the award, but to speak about Ayanna is a representative from Girl Scouts of Southeastern Michigan, she's the COO, she's a, she's one of the big people, important people, and she came here to celebrate with Ayanna, so Denise Minnelli.
Good evening, I would just like to share a little information about Ayanna. Ayanna Harper is age 11, she's a 4th grader at Commerce Elementary, she has two older sisters and a younger brother, she has been an active member of Girl Scouts since 2018, she also attends ballet and jazz classes, she's very outgoing and friendly, always first to help when someone is in need. She loves cookie booths because she gets to talk to a lot of people, but hates the cold. Absolutely lives for Girl Scout camp, probably the most friendly and sincere Girl Scout you have ever met. She loves to explore, learn, and spend time with friends and sister scouts. She loves being outside, she loves hugs, she's always smiling, and she wants to help however she can and whenever she can. I would like to share the story of Ayanna and how she earned the award that she's about to receive. On July 6th, 2023, Shelley Wyatt was with her grandkids over, she had her grandkids over for the night, excuse me, there were four of them, Avea Harper, age 12, Alexandria Wyatt, age 11, Ayanna Harper, age 10, and Antoine Harper, age 3. She made dinner that night, hamburgers and corn on the cob. They were all in the kitchen eating, the kids were sitting at the island and she was standing on the opposite side of the island. They were laughing and joking around, she grabbed a piece of hamburger off Antoine's plate and put it in her mouth saying, mm, this is good, and as she went to tell him it tasted better than hers, she inhaled the piece of meat into her throat, she immediately started coughing, and this went on for only minutes as the coughing got more and more intense. Ayanna immediately jumped up and grabbed a bottle of water out of the fridge and opened it and set it next to her on the counter and started back blows. It was at that point she was no longer getting oxygen in and had stopped coughing. She turned to the sink, not sure why, but she did, she grabbed her phone sitting next to the sink and hit her sister-in-law's phone number, she lives only a couple doors down. She was no longer able to get any sounds out, so she shoved the phone towards Ayanna. Ayanna proceeded to get more aggressive with her back blows, and then she put her hand on her back and pushed her over the sink more, and as her sister-in-law answered, she yelled, "Minonee is choking," as well as Avea yelled at the same time. Ayanna then got even more aggressive with the back blows, and a few seconds later, the meat dislodged from her throat and she was able to breathe again. It all happened very quickly, she was terrified at the point she could no longer get oxygen. Ayanna stayed calm and never strayed from her course of back blows. When they were talking after about what had happened, she stood at that moment, she could only think of Mrs. Michelle Brandon telling her how to hold the baby doll and do the back blows, so that is what she did. I told her she did a great job because it worked, and we would have missed, but we would have Miss Michelle come back to the troop and do another session on how to help bigger people that are choking. I not only want to acknowledge that under the circumstance, I want to acknowledge that under the circumstances, Ayanna stayed calm and jumped into action and saved her life, but without the first aid and CPR training that Michelle Brandon provides to the troops, this situation might not have gone so well. At this time, I would like to read a letter from our National Chief Executive Officer, and you can go ahead and pin Ayanna if you'd like. December 14th, 2023, Ayanna Harper. Dear Ayanna, on behalf of the entire Girl Scout movement, I want to congratulate you for earning one of the highest honors in Girl Scouting, the Medal of Honor. Through your willingness to take decisive action in the midst of an emergency, you have not only attempted to save a life, but also served as an example for all Girl Scouts. I commend you for your heroism and quick thinking. As you know well, at Girl Scouts, we strive to help girls develop the skills to improve their own lives and the world around them. You are a testament to the highest principles of the Girl Scout promise in law and embody what it means to be a girl of courage, confidence, and character who makes the world a better place. The Medal of Honor pin is worn on the insignia sash or vest below the membership stars to the right or left of the bridging patch, or on the right side of the uniform, level with the Girl Scout membership pin. As our founder Julia Gordon-Low once said, scouting rises within you and inspires you to put forth your best. Your actions reflect the truth of Juliet's words, and you have made all of us very proud. Thank you sincerely, Bonnie Barzakowski, Chief Executive Officer for Girl Scouts of the USA. Congratulations, Ayanna.
Okay, our next agenda item is Student Leadership Presentation, Dr. Bernia.
I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Lance.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia, I'm happy to introduce Mr. Kyle Medier, who will approach the podium and lead us off in recognizing the presentation from his students.
One moment, please.
I just want to say to start off, one of the students just said, I forgot that Mr. Weber is not just at Central, it feels like he's everywhere, all the time, all the time, so, thank you, Mr. Weber, if you're listening. My name is Kyle Medier, I'm the Principal at Wald Lake Central High School, I'm going to quickly turn over the microphone to the four students that we have with us tonight who represent our Student Leadership Class at Wald Lake Central, they do a fantastic job, I couldn't be more proud of them and their teacher, Ms. Tattoo, who's coaching softball tonight, and so she can't be here, but at this time, I'll turn it over to Sarah, who's going to lead us off on the presentation from Student Leadership at Wald Lake Central. Thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you for having us, like he said, this is the Executive Board of Student Leadership at Wald Lake Central, my name is Sarah Golly, these are four out of the five members here with us today.
I'm Angelina Verga, I'm Executive Vice President.
I'm Olivia Oley, I'm Executive Secretary.
I'm Courtney Fulcher, I'm Executive Treasurer.
So, we are the Executive Board of Student Leadership, at Wald Lake Central, we have Student Councils, which consists of a council in each grade at Central, and then we have our Student Leadership Class, you don't need to be in Student Council to be in our Leadership Class, we welcome it to all students, and in our Leadership Class, we plan a lot of the unified events at Central, like, we plan Homecoming Week, we plan our volleyball marathon, canned food drive, holiday gift drive, and other events, we help with Teacher Appreciation Week, we do things for Halloween and other holidays and Valentine's Day, and this is a photo of our class, and every year, it consists of around the same students, and we welcome new students to every year, and yeah.
So probably one of our biggest weeks of the year with the most school spirit is our Homecoming Week, we have a lot of like events during our week that are unique to Central, for example, we have wall hanging, the parade party before. For example, we have wall hanging, the parade party before the football game, where like all the teams can make a float with like a truck or something, and then we go through the neighborhoods around our school. We throw candy to the little kids, and it like includes all the clubs, all the sports. Everyone's like invited to participate, and it brings our community together well. And we invite like the elementary schools that feed to like, obviously, our school eventually. And they like come to the football game, and they hang out with us before the game, and it's a good way to like bring the different schools together. We also have our pep assembly and our class Olympics assembly. We have two assemblies that week. It really brings up school spirit this year. I think our school spirit has been higher than it's been all the years. A lot of the teachers I mentioned, it's pretty much the highest they've ever seen it being. Yeah. Oh, and we have spirit days, like every day in this year. The spirit days were really fun. We had people vote on them to make sure that everyone enjoyed which ones we chose.
So, another event that we do during Homecoming Week is wall hanging, and each one of the classes come together in the cafeteria, and they paint a huge banner that matches their class's theme. And so this year, our like whole homecoming theme was board games, and then each class had, we picked Candy Land, Clue, Monopoly, and just, and Sorry, were all the board games. And then everyone painted a big banner with their class, and it was a really good way for all the grades to come together and like hang out with people that you might not usually outside of school, and just like really boosted school spirit, and then also decorate our cafeteria and got everyone more in the homecoming spirit.
So, aside from all these events, the Saturday morning before Homecoming Week, we have all of, we have a mandatory event where all of our class councils come to school for like four hours in the morning, and they decorate a pod or a hallway, and then seniors get to pick first, all the way down to freshmen. And then the following Monday morning, the start of Homecoming Week, we have four teachers who judge which hallway is the best decorated, and then that kind of kicks off Homecoming Week, and then whoever has the best gets the most points, and then it's ranked down so that at the end of the week, all points are tallied up, and whatever grade has the most wins Homecoming Week.
So, right after we finish planning Homecoming, we jump into our first fundraiser event of the year, which is canned food drive. We kick off canned food drive every year on the first Saturday of November, where we have student leadership invites student council to get into driving groups that usually consist of a senior driving, a junior in the car, a sophomore and a freshman from each council. And they drive around to the designated like Wild Lake Central feeding neighborhoods off of our district map, and they drive around asking for donations or cans and monetary donations. This year, we raised almost 4,000 pounds of food to our local hospitality house right here off Welch, and we raised over $12,000 in monetary donations. The biggest amount of this donation comes from our kickoff, but we also do a drive throughout the month in a competition between our first hour classes, and we usually do an incentive. Teachers also put their own incentives, like dropping a test grade if our class gets the most cans or money. And then we usually, as student leadership, throw them like a pancake party or something, whatever they choose. And it's one of my favorite events of the year because we're bringing charity into something fun at school, you know? I mean, you could see Mr. Medier with our giant can, and it's a really fun event while we're also doing something great for our community.
Another big event that's like exclusive to Central is volleyball marathon. Every year, usually in like March or April, depending on like our schedules and spring breaks and stuff, we put on volleyball marathon. It's a charity event as well. This year, our like charity we did was Make-A-Wish Michigan, and we raised around $16,000 for them. So basically, students will pay for a ticket to come to the event. We have, like, it's a volleyball tournament, so not everyone has to play volleyball, so you can be on a team and not play, or you can go and not play. But all the teams, every team makes shirts and like get with their friends, and they, we have volleyball tournament. And we also have like Henna, hypnotists, character artists, mini golf, and other activities like for people who aren't, and to like fill time when you're like not in playoffs or something. This year is our 43rd annual. We brought it back two years ago after COVID. We missed a year, but yeah, there's like a lot of participation across the grades, and it's really fun to like see teams like form and then mix together like different grade teams, and then all play against each other. And it's like a really positive, like fun way to help our community.
One of the other like charity events that we do is the holiday gift drive, and so this year, we adopted Walt Whitman Elementary School in Pontiac, and we always adopt an elementary school from like a lower-income area or somewhere where the kids might not always get Christmas gifts. And so then we'll have little sheets that we hand out to people at lunch, and it has a wish list for the kids, and it's filled with necessities and things that the kids want. So like coats, hats, and clothes, and also like toys and games, and then the family or person can adopt them and buy gifts for them and donate them, and then our student leadership class will go and deliver it to the school. This year, we collected over 350 gifts for all the students. I'm pretty sure every single student in the school was able to receive a gift from us this year. And then we also were collecting food and other necessities for their school's pantry, and every student got a mix of necessities and toys and things that they like. And so we were able to give them like clothes, games, and then our class was able to go and individually deliver them to the kids, and we were able to like see them open the gifts, and it was just a really good way for us to bring the school together and for our class to see an actual impact that we were bringing into the community.
So, beyond all of the events that we've put on at Central, Central's expanded a lot more out to other clubs that other students have led and founded. Some of our main clubs are listed here, but there are many more than these. These are just some big ones we have. We have The Giving Tree. We have DECA. Buddy Up, which is where students help other students who may need a friend or help throughout the school year. We have No Place For Hate to help bring kindness and peace to the community and the school. Mental Health Matters Club, and then Model UN.
So, Giving Tree was started by one of our Spanish teachers at Central, and what she's done through this club is invite students to give back to our community. So one of their, some of their big events throughout the year are the Clean Love Project, where we just have this giant bin in our lobby where we take donations for, and it go, all the boxes that they make go to women in need in the Detroit area. Fleece and Thank You is where we come together as a club and invite other clubs at Central to make blankets for the children, to go to the children's hospital. And PB&J Outreach, we try to go to a few times a year. It takes place on Saturday mornings where we go to prepare food, and then we go and pass it out at like 6:00 a.m. in downtown Detroit to local homeless shelters.
No Place For Hate is a club that's like across the district, but at our school, we expanded a little more. We had a diversity fair this year where it included different clubs like African-American Alliance, Muslim Student Association, CASA, which is Caldean American Student Association, and other clubs that are like more diversity-based. To, at lunch, we had tables set up. There were like activities at the tables. There was like treats, so students could come up to the tables, learn more about like who we are at Central, because we're like a very diverse school, so it was important that everyone like understands everyone. They also had Friendship Bracelet Making Day, which was, it was kind of like a fun thing that they did at lunch to like give everyone an opportunity to like be together and like make something fun. And then we also had Pledge Day, where students can sign a pledge and like get a bracelet saying that they're gonna be nice to people at Central and be positive and not bully and like keep the school like a positive, inclusive, like uplifting place.
DECA is another one of our clubs, and this year it's been especially successful. We had a number of students that were able to go to the state competition, and then Abigail Piscover was also going to the international competition in Anaheim, California, and she'll be competing there later, and this is the first student in our district who's ever qualified for this. And so this is just another club and another opportunity for students to get involved and outside of the classroom, and not only like grow their skills, but also like have a good time with their friends and be involved in their community.
Next club we have is Mental Health Matters. This was kind of started by a couple teachers and then some students in our school. They've kind of worked a lot this year to just put little events and little actions on throughout the school to help just bring like peace and understanding that mental health is important. This year, they did motivational messages on the bathroom mirrors, just put little sticky notes in all the bathrooms to remind students like that it's okay to struggle and that mental health is important. They had a mental health advocate for March. Mr. Hebert was our AP Lit teacher. He was the award winner for that. And then just reminders throughout the whole year to be positive and kind.
Buddy Up was a club started at Central to help get students involved in things that they may not be able to involve in. So it started with consisting of like neurodivergent, neurotypical students, inviting and being able to come together and find a friend, whether you're at lunch or you want to do an after-school activity, you have a friend, you have a buddy. They throw holiday parties, Valentine's Day parties, and one of the biggest things that we started at Central was our, through our Unified Sports. Last year, we had basketball, and this year, we were able to add soccer as well. And it's being able to be included in something that these students were never a part of, and now they have this whole new look on high school with involvement in all these other sports and activities that they were never invited to be included in, and now everybody is able to come together with their friends and build new friendships and relationships with the club.
So, this year, at Model UN, we had six of nine of our participants get awards. We had two students with highest honors and four students with second honors. They work really hard throughout the year to like practice and gather information to compete at these events. They spend like whole weekends at the events, and this year, it's like really great that we're so successful and a majority of our students scored and got awards.
And then, like Anne said earlier, this year's school spirit has been the highest it's been in a pretty long time at Central. And so these are some of the Homecoming Spirit Days that we did, and there was a lot of participation throughout like the entire student body, like it wasn't just one group of kids. It was pretty much everyone participated in one day or another. So we had Adam Sandler Day, which you could dress like Adam Sandler. Maze Craze is not only like our school colors, but it's also our school Instagram and basically our whole brand for school spirit, and that's what we call our student section for football games and basketball games, which also had a huge attendance this year, since our basketball team was doing so well and everyone really enjoyed like the football game themes, so they were really like participated in. We had Barbie versus Ken Day and Holiday Day, which again, like it was more than we could have even predicted of how many people participated, and it was just really fun to see everyone come together and like actually dress up and be participating in the Spirit Days.
So Unified Sports, we've had for a couple years, but we kind of really took off on it this year, and it's one of, I think, one of the most inspiring, impactful things that we've seen at Central this year. We have a unified basketball team, and we have a unified soccer team. This year, we had a whole inclusion week, and at the end of the week, we had a assembly including the unified basketball team. Wild Lake Central's unified basketball team played Wild Lake Northern's unified basketball team, and I honestly have never seen a more impactful, kind gym. Every single student there was standing up, cheering, happy, cheering all these kids on who may have never thought they'd be able to play us for, and this is like a dream to them. So it was a very, very impactful day, and Unified Sports has brought a lot of growth to Wild Lake Central.
So, not only we were just able to have our Unified Sports basketball game this year, but we turned it into a week of Inclusion Week, and it was also a Spirit Week this week, and each day had a different theme, whether it was to be more welcoming to a friend on one day, and so on and so forth. And people were able to make pledges at lunch. We had this giant sign off Oakley Park Road. And our basketball assembly, we invited Wild Lake Northern, I think it was, right? Wild Lake Northern came and played, and this was an idea that started at Central, and then it was branded off to the other high schools, and they were able to do the same thing there, and it was a, it was a great hit. I mean, we've been planning assemblies at Central for the past three years, and I've never seen anything like this unified one. It was something that I hope will continue on at Central every year and become a tradition, because Central's, we have a lot of traditions, whether it's our Homecoming Week or our charities, things that are very unique to Central, and this is something I hope will start to flourish and even be seen in other districts as well.
So, like Sarah, or like Courtney said, our student sections this year were like really big. Our basketball team was doing very well. They should have won districts, but they didn't. We got a little chewed out of that one. But as you can see, like, we got our student section shirts for the basketball team, like the 2023, 2024 year. We had our whiteout, which was, there was probably the most people at that football game besides the Homecoming game. And then every week at the football games, there was like, the stands were packed, whether we were home or away, like everyone participated in themes and like went all out with it. A lot of people like painted their whole bodies and stuff, like school spirit's like really high right now, and our student sections are a big part of like our sports doing well and like increasing positivity and excitement for school.
Okay, we have also Teacher Appreciation. This is personally one of my favorite weeks because my four years at Central, I have had very, very good teachers, and I think that they don't always get the recognition they deserve. So, student leadership takes a lot of time to plan. We're kind of in that stage right now. Towards the end of the year, we plan Teacher Appreciation Week, and we personalize gifts for every teacher, every staff member, and then kind of unique to us too, we actually expanded last year and did all of our lunch staff, all of our custodians, and we did every staff member listed at Wild Lake Central, got a personalized eraser and cup with their name on it. I brought in my cricket, and we spent hours in class cricketing everybody's name, but it was really worth it at the end, and I think that these teachers, they look at it, they're really happy about it, and I think that they really deserve it. They don't always get the recognition they deserve, so this is very special, and this year, we hope to even go bigger beyond the gift we did last year. And we also provide a breakfast and a lunch throughout that week and a coffee bar to teachers, so we spend a lot of time on it, but I think it's well-deserved.
So, as previously mentioned, Maze Craze has become an identity at Central. It's not only the name of our Instagram and Twitter and the name of our football games. Anytime someone needs to wear blue and gold, we call it Maze Craze, but it's something that goes back to our identity as Vikings, and at the end of the day, everybody at Central knows that they're a Viking and knows that it's something that they are a part of. So it really has put a kick in on spirit because it gave it a different name. It's not something that's included at all the other schools, and it all goes back to unifying our school. And through this name and through this brand or Instagram, whatever it is, everybody feels unified. They know it's a place where they could feel included and they could find a friend, and it makes, it made high school a more enjoyable experience to have like this identity be pushed forth through every club, not just student leadership. And I think that concludes our presentation. Yeah. We try to thank you for having us and for able to show you all the ways that Central unifies our students and brings us together. Thank you.
We were thinking about how to one-up Western, so we brought gifts. I just want to say again, thank you for hearing us tonight. This, this class, this movement is not only wonderful for our school because it makes school more enjoyable for everybody, which is important because students are more engaged in algebra when they look forward to other things at school as well, but also the students that are in student leadership learn a great deal about organization. These are our future hospital administrators, school administrators, other types of people that are organizing large events, large numbers of people, for a common theme and a common cause. And so I want to thank you for supporting our leadership class at all three of our high schools. It is very important, and it pays great dividends. So thank you so much.
Okay, next agenda item is our district assessment report. Dr. Bernia.
I'm going to now turn the floor over to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Thank you, members of the board, if you'll just give me a moment to pull up the data presentation. All right, well, thank you very much. I do want to start out by thanking you for your patience. I know that this data presentation was something that you've had in your hands for a while. I know I did share it with members of the Board of Education and with Cabinet probably about six-plus weeks ago, and due to a family emergency, I had to leave right before the last board meeting, so I do apologize for that, but I've, I've relabeled it April 4, 2024, so it is the winter data that we're going to be talking about and talking about some really specific data points today. But again, thank you for your patience, and I look forward to sharing today's work. One of the things that I wanted to mention, I'm going to start out with, and thank you to the board for a number of questions about this data presentation last month, and I was glad I was able to get back to you and give you some details on that. One of the things that, that was a really important question that came from the board is, this is a really different data presentation from what we've seen before, from myself and from my team in the Learning Services Department, and that is true. One of the things that I've been looking at is how to share relevant data with the board over the last several years. You know, I've been here five years now. Several of those years were during the COVID years and some of those data points and things that, that we were really trying to work through as we got back to looking at to looking at growth. And, and that's really where we're at in the last year and a half to two years now is really positioning ourselves as to where are we at with our growth data. Members of the Board of Education have often asked really great questions, things like, what do we do for those kids that are in the, in the, the pink and the red areas on some of those charts and graphs? Like, what do, what do we do for them? How do we drill down into that? And how do we really get to the heart of helping students that we know need that help? So hearing feedback from members of the board, as well as, I know the board participated in a data study with an MASB facilitator. And one of those things that I believe was important from your work with that facilitator on that day in November was that you really started to think more about strategic planning and systems and growth in that regard. And so I really wanted to kind of tailor this presentation a little differently in terms of looking at just our systems improvement work that we're doing and what data is relevant to that. Because I know that Board President Peterson and I happened to be chatting at a recent county board meeting. And one of the things that we were talking about is, you know, what kind of data is relevant to share? There's data everywhere. I could be talking about grades, I could be talking about behavior data, I could be talking about attendance data, state assessment data, M-Step, SAT. So where do we really get to, like, what's important? And one of the things that I just want to share is that from a system standpoint, I've been fortunate enough over the last 20 years or so in my career to be really involved deeply in district improvement work and, and looking at how do you really get to the heart of what you want to improve? So that's really what this data presentation is about today. So just to share that purpose statement, I really want to help members of the board. You know, as I said, I know you've had this data in your hands for about the last six weeks or so, but also members of the community, really take a look at what data points are related specifically to our district improvement or MYKIP goals and to share the progress that we've been working on as a district, addressing the needs of all of our learners. Really great questions coming from the board, and so I hope to, to kind of get to the heart of that as we go through this. Not a lot of slides today, so I'm not going to bore you a ton with lots and lots of slides, but really salient and relevant points that I want to share. So just as a reminder, the MYKIP goals, and MYKIP stands for Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process. And that's a mouthful, but coming out of COVID, the state of Michigan moved away from a more traditional school improvement process to this new MYKIP process. So we were learning along the way. We were coming out of a couple of years of not having any of that accountability data or school improvement work that we were accountable for doing, but learning about what is this new continuous improvement process about? And really, at the heart of it is, what is your data story for your district? What is the story of the data telling you about where trends and weaknesses rise to a level that are noticeable? So those areas are, number one, enabling all students to increase proficiency in reading and comprehending informational text. I'll talk to you about that. I know you have the, the, the data in front of you as well. But also, a systems-level goal, and that is that by the end of the academic year, Wild Lake will have a successfully implemented, multi-tiered system of supports that supports the needs of all learners. Learners that are at the struggling end and learners that are at the high end as well. So we're going to talk about that. So you might say, well, how did you and your team and stakeholders in the district really determine that these were areas of need? Well, oftentimes, when I bring you sets of data, we're talking about one singular set of data. I might bring you iReady data. Or we might talk about SAT or graduation rates or M-Step. What this data story did for us several years back, coming out of the pandemic and learning a little bit about what this new MYKIP platform is, you really want to do something called triangulate your data. So you want to have three sets of data that you really carefully study, and then you look at commonalities and trends across those three data sets. So this is just a snapshot. At the top, you'll see the Spring 2023 iReady data for K through eight. And that's in the area of reading, so that's our literacy data snapshot at the top. I also put in a little icon there for M-Step, which is our state assessment that we do each spring. We're coming up on that season here in just the next week or so. And then our own Wild Lake Consolidated Schools logo, because I wanted the board and Cabinet as well and members of the community to understand that we also look at our local data. How are kids doing in courses? What are their grades like? You know, what's our, what's our failure rate like? What does our graduation rate look like? What are areas and courses that our kids are, are struggling? So we take those three sets of data and we say, what's common? Where are common weaknesses across these three sets and, and what can we do to, to address that? So what we noted several years ago in telling that data story, and it took us about four or five months as an internal team, stakeholders from elementary all the way through high school, administrators, teachers, members of our Learning Services team, really doing a deep dig into what does the data show? So at the top, and I know I've shared this data slide with you before, but as you can see, there's always things to work on, right? There's always things to, to pay attention to, but what seems to stand out more than, than others? And so those bottom three horizontal bars in the graph there look at comprehension overall. And then we look at literature or nonfiction text. And lastly, informational text. So that's that text that really cuts across content areas. How are we doing on reading and math? How are we doing on reading in social studies and science? And those areas where we know that those really lend themselves to lifelong skills. Reading literature is important. I'm, I'm an English major. I'm a literacy specialist in my, in my past part of my career. But really looking at informational text because that's the piece that's critical to lifelong skills post, post-K-12. So we know that that's really important. And so we looked at M-Step, we looked at our grade data, and we started to note that informational text comprehension and vocabulary, that's the, the bar graph right in the middle, those were both very weak areas for us when we looked at our iReady data relative to the other areas that are represented on the graph. So we said to ourselves, well, we were starting to see these trends. So the next couple of slides that I'm going to take you through are really looking at district-level data around informational text and vocabulary and also drilling it down to elementary and middle school. So this next graph is specifically iReady data. We'll talk about some, some of the other data in just a minute. But looking at iReady, on the left side of this chart, you'll see at the top, it's highlighted in yellow. This is district data, so this is K-8. Looking just at the domain of vocabulary, starting out in 22, 23, this is the fall data from students that started, so about a year and a half ago. You can see that the, we had about 39% of students that were mid or above or early and on grade level. 38% were showing about one grade level below, and 24% were scoring two or more grade levels below, just on vocabulary. This isn't based on, you know, like a, a reading score. This isn't grade level reading. This is just looking at their use of vocabulary in informational text. Now we compare that to the data that we collected in February with our iReady. So same group of kids, but looking at where we're at now in window two for 23, 24, you'll notice 39% has now gone up to 52%. 38% has decreased to 31. And importantly, that 24%, those two or more grade levels behind are, have decreased also to 17. So you can see that placement of students in looking at informational vocabulary has really had some nice growth. And this is only in about a year and a half of intervention time. So a year and a half of us working on this. I'll get to the slides later where it talks about how we actually work on these, these data sets and what do we do with that. So this is K-8. Here's elementary, so this is K-5, starting fall of '22. And where were we at just this past February of '24? So really nice growth when we take a look at our elementary students and their placement in vocabulary of informational, with informational text. And then looking at our middle school scores, so 6, 8. Again, growth, maybe not as significant as what we saw in K-5, but still growth. So that's really nice to see. Now we're going to take a look at informational text comprehension. So moving away from just vocabulary, and now it's what do you comprehend when you're reading informational text passages? Like I said, those science passages, those math problem solving, those, those math problems, those science and social studies texts. So again, K-8 for the district, looking at fall of '22 to now, you can see some nice growth overall as a district, 42% on grade level and above to 54%. And then that nice decrease in the one and two or more grade levels below. So we're making progress there in just a year and a half time, year and a half's time. And then breaking it down a little bit more into elementary. As you can see, our elementary teams are really doing a fantastic job in really focusing on increasing that comprehension and focusing on vocabulary as we saw in the previous slides. And then at the middle school level, a nice growth picture. So Mrs. Solville, you have in front of you, because I know that this is a terrible chart to look at when it comes to a screen such as what we have up here, but Mrs. Solville's going to be bringing around a hard copy of this for, for members of the board so that you can take a look at it kind of up, up close and you can see what I'm going to be explaining to you. So I talked about that data story. One of the things that's really important in triangulating data is looking at more than just one, one set of data. So we, I've shared with you iReady. This is M-Step, so this is our state assessment. And what we're looking at here on this particular chart and in the handout that you have in front of you is, this is every domain on the English Language Arts State Assessment that has to do with informational text. So you'll notice there, there are two columns on the right-hand side. So one says relative weakness as of 2021 data, and then relative weakness as of 2023. Because remember, we take it each spring. So spring of '21, you'll see all of those columns were red. Those were relative areas of weakness for us as a district, informational text on the M-Step. And you might say, well, what is a relative, what is a relative weakness? How did you determine that? We determined that by looking at the numbers of students that were, that were successful on these. And we took a look across the system at, let me just pull this up because I don't want to misspeak. We looked at students in grades three and six and seven, where they're taking this particular ELA test. And the relative weakness was determined by us. We set this, this threshold of more than 25% of our students in grades three, six and seven scoring either partially proficient or not proficient in these areas. So it's a pretty good threshold, looking at 25% or, or more not, you know? We're, we're capturing a large group of kids not doing really well on these things. So what have we done for the last couple of years? Well, like I showed with the iReady data, and I'll talk about it at the end, how do we drill into that? Our team's been really focused on PDE, on supporting our teachers, on helping teachers use that data, and on helping them make instructional decisions in their classrooms specific to informational text. And I'm really pleased to see that as of last spring, so almost a year-old data, and we're going to be collecting more data this spring when we're done taking the M-Step, but you can see there are a number of areas that are in the green now. So no longer areas of relative weakness, no new ones have cropped up. We still have a few in there that, that are still noted as red, so we still have work to do. We've been working on that this year. I'm anxious to see what our, our spring scores look like. But the nice thing about this is it's showing you as a system where we identified those areas of weakness and then how we've grown. So I'm anxious to see our, our growth this spring. I'm, I'm really, really hopeful for that. So we're talking a lot about how do we, how do we look at data as a placement? Like, like Kathy takes a test on April 18th, Kathy places in the proficient range, or she places on grade level. That's me, one time, one day, on one test. So that placement data helps me know, how's Kathy doing in understanding the standards that we want her to learn? There's also another piece of data that is really important, and that is growth. So one of the things that I just want to take a moment to share with the board and members of the community, it is about a two-minute video produced by iReady, but really helping us understand why growth is important. We know placement's important. We know understanding a standard and either having mastery of it or not having mastery yet is important, but how are we growing? That's another really important piece. So we're going to take a moment to watch a short, few-minute video. Oh, it's a JPG photo. Well, this is fun because this is a photo in, in the slide deck. All right, so what I'll do, let me move past growth for just a minute. Let me talk about our growth data, and then I'll go ahead and pull up that video separately. So I don't know if, Mrs. Solville, you could... You have a copy of that?
I do.
Could you pull the video for me? I don't know how we're going to do this. Hold on one second. I could. I can't, I can't copy and paste that. All right. Sorry for the technical difficulty. Give me just a moment. That's all right? So it's a video, and that looks like it is a slide. I do know where it's located, and I can, I can find that for members of, I'll be sure to share that with you. I do apologize for that. No, that's all right. We're going to go ahead and, and go back to the slide deck. All right. So let's talk a little bit about growth. So one of the important things that we know is in order for students to catch up, they have to be making growth. And so a student could be two or more grade levels behind or one grade level behind, but growing. So if they're two or more grade levels behind and, and making growth, that student may move from the red into the yellow, but still be showing behind. So that's one of those really kind of deep embedded pieces of data that's really important for us to understand. In order for kids to be able to catch up, we know they need to make accelerated growth, and that's making more than a year's growth in a year's time. Our standard, our gold standard expectation is that kids are growing in a year, growing at a year's growth rate in a year's time. But for kids that are behind, if they keep growing at a year's growth in a year's time, they're always going to be behind. They're never going to catch up. So it's really important for us to pay attention to those students that are in the yellow and in the red when we look at iReady and make sure that their growth trajectories are beyond what we would expect for typical growth. So this is our iReady data just from this past winter, so February 2024. And how are students doing growing in their literacy development? That dark green line at the 50% mark right there means that that is the expected growth for students halfway through the year. So 50% of the year, they should be at that growth line right there. And I was overwhelmed to see the amount of growth that our students are making. So let me just give you a quick, a quick snapshot. Let's look at fourth grade. Do you see where it says 90? Our fourth graders across the district as a whole grew 90% in half a year's time, meaning they almost achieved a full year's meaning they almost achieved a full year's growth by February of 2024. That's outstanding. When our iReady consultants came in to share this data with us, they said, you got to look at what fourth grade is doing because that is some, that is some really great growth data. And as I look across all of the grades, even sixth and seventh grade were meeting the growth target of half a year's growth in half a year's time. But look at all the other grades that not only exceeded that 50th, that halfway mark, but just killed it. I mean, you look at fifth grade, we've got 80, 85% growth in half a year's time. So it's really, really encouraging to see because what this speaks to is we have students making accelerated growth from the from the kids that are in the red and the yellow all the way up to those kids that are performing at the top. Because I know that's another important question that the board has asked. How are our high performing students doing? Are they kind of staying stagnant? No, their growth trajectories are also accelerated too. So really encouraging to see this. Oh, 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 I don't want to exit the slideshow. Hold on. Let me go back. And then the other piece in terms of growth data is our math. So how are we growing in math? Maybe not as robustly as we were growing in our literacy data that you just saw in the green. So this is looking at how students grew in just this year. So from their fall iReady scores to to mid mid year. That that bar line there, everybody's meeting where they're supposed to be and some really exceeding it. Again, look at fourth grade. That's one of the things our learning services team is going to be looking at is what's really happening in fourth grade. Eighth grade has also had a significant amount of growth. I know Mr. Tabo was just here a few, a few minutes ago for the earlier awards. But he did want me to make sure that he mentioned to you that middle school chose to take their midyear diagnostics earlier than the rest of the district. So they actually started taking their assessments in December before the holiday break and finished up in January when we returned. So if you look at the sixth, seventh and eighth grade, that's making that amount of growth in really like three, three and a half months worth of time in school this year. So really, really great growth from from our middle school teams. And just really pleased with what we're seeing as far as accelerated growth and kids really catching up and and closing that gap. So lastly, what are those action steps? So what does that mean? So we we took a look at this data story. I've shared with you how we determined what our goals are. We talked about how we're tracking those goals. We're also looking at grade data that got a little bit messy for me to try to share with you when I was trying to extract that. I'm happy if you have more questions about grades, I can I can pull that data for you in a little different format. It just didn't present really well on a on a large screen. But those action steps that we're taking, you know, really since I came in 2019, building that systems alignment with our MTSS process is important. That's how we identify students that are in need of further supports and really drill down into what they need at the classroom level. We've really focused our professional development around those things such as vocabulary, informational text comprehension and our MTSS work. And then, because I've given you kind of this big broad data, how do we use that data in much smaller chunks? And we do close data reviews on a monthly basis with our teachers at the at the classroom level. They have common planning time. Our instructional specialists at the elementary school and our principals work together with grade level teams to really dig into their classroom level data and look down to the individual student that's in need of supports. And how can they form small groups, reteach concepts, go over things and review things with kids, accommodate lessons for them? So those are, that's really how you really get to the heart of that that lift for students that that need that. And then the continuous monitoring piece, and that's really what I'm I'm sharing with you. How are we looking at individual student growth? And then how are we translating that and looking back up to that district balcony level view of what does that translate into for overall systems improvement? So that is the last slide that I have for you. I know that several weeks back, you you shared a number of questions with me. I'm happy to open the, open it up to any further questions that you might have and and help you with that.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thank you, Mrs. Kohansky, for the time that you have spent putting this all together and really being thoughtful about how to present it to the board in a way that is different and improved for us to understand it. And thank you for taking the time to answer questions that have been asked already. So I have a few more. Hopefully I can ask all of them.
Sure.
One of my questions is, if I count how many months there are in a school year and February is the month when these tests are given, my math says that's two thirds of the way through the year. Why is 50% instead of 66% that target goal on the charts that you shared?
So actually, we count our calendar year in 180 days. And that February mark is actually around the midway point through the school year for that. So I guess we can, I'd have to look at if you were counting August or if you were counting September. But February is that midyear mark. They do start taking the assessments in January. So we open those up right after the the holiday break and when kids come back. The window closes in February, and so there's there's about a four week window there where kids are are taking that assessment. So it kind of does. I mean, it's not an exact pinpoint to midyear, but it it does hit us from a from a school calendar date right there in the middle.
Do we maybe see like learning accelerate toward the end of the year as kids are starting to figure it out?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
I know that you shared the data on this, the green and red one, from 2021 and 2023. Do we have or can we get the data pre-COVID?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would love to see because COVID kind of.
Yeah.
The lost years. And then I want to confirm all of the data that you shared in the the red, yellow and green. That's from iReady. That's all iReady.
Correct, yes, correct.
So what are the benchmarks? Like I can see our growth. I can see, you know, we grew from 42 to 54% on something. But where are we supposed to be? And then where is that benchmark from? Like, is it relative to districts like ours, the state, things like that? I don't expect you to know those numbers offhand, but I'm just wondering, okay, we are doing something, but are we doing what we're supposed to be doing?
Yeah, absolutely. And and while I don't have a a background in being a statistician, but what I can tell you is that iReady collects national data across districts pretty much in in all 50 states. And what they do is they set those benchmark scores for us. So they they give us those. I'm I'm happy to put that together for you and kind of give you a little bit of a synopsis of where iReady says from from national norm data where we're supposed to be hitting. That's kind of where that line comes comes from at the 50% growth mark. And there are, you know, benchmark numbers attached to that. So like if I'm a third grader, it might be a score of 387. But what does 387 mean, right? So I can, I can certainly pull that for you and give you a little bit more detail on it. You bet.
Thanks. I had one more question on the the couple of charts that had the 50% green line. Does that mean that at the end of the, at the close of the school year, when you get the final set of data, we would see these same two charts again with a line at the 100% and presumably bars exceeding the 100% line? And this is all iReady?
Yes, that is exactly right. So that bar will move all the way over to the 100 line. And then I'll bring this data back to you so that you can see that growth exceeding that too. Yes, thank you. You bet.
When we do these tests and breakdowns, are there any students that are excluded from this? Or is this all students within the district?
Yeah, thank you for that. This is all K eight students who access our curriculum, basically. So only some students in basic programming where they might be in an alternate curriculum in which iReady is not a a good measure for students in those programs. So it's a very small percentage of some of our students with uniquenesses that that cause them to to take some other kinds of assessments. But yes, this this, I would say, represents the majority of our K eight.
Inclusive of any English language students or?
It includes our our English language learners. It includes students with 504s, IEPs, only some of those most most uniquely challenged students that have pretty significant IEPs for which this assessment wouldn't be appropriate. You bet.
Mr. Peterson?
Mrs. Casgrandi.
Kind of build a little bit off of what Mrs. Levin was talking about. I like this. What I'd love to see is continued trend. So as you and Dr. Burney and staff bring stuff forward, you know, keep, keep this data on there so we can make sure that we see that where we actually, you know, took care of a relative weakness and made it a no, that we're still achieving that, right? I'd like to see that trend because I think ultimately what we've talked about a little bit, and we'll probably talk more about in strategic planning, is how do we take some of this information and then continue to build for the superintendent and the and the district goals that are really data driven, right? Because they're a little looser right now because we haven't had some of this. So I applaud you for this. Thank you. And just ask that we can do that so we can build on that for superintendent's goals, et cetera.
Absolutely. I'll keep that consistent for you and we'll we'll consistently watch that as we as we progress through the the test collection season.
And then I guess the other question, I just want to ask high level. And if you don't have an answer today, that's okay, but maybe think about it. Is what else do you need from us as a board to make you successful and continue to tell the data story? And I know it may not be just one thing, but you know, what is it? You know, and it may change, right? Is it resources? Is it making sure you have access to the right tools? You know, whatever it may be, I'm not going to make them up here. But but you know, what can we do as a board to support you to make sure that we can still get this? So we can ask the good questions and make sure we're seeing growth?
Yeah, thank you very much. I I will think about that in depth and and certainly take that back to the team. One thing that just comes to mind, you know, right now is just that continued support with our professional development and the supports for our teachers at the classroom level. Right now, I've been able to really be strategic over the last few years with use of our at-risk funding with 31A and supporting roles and things in our buildings like instructional specialists. If you remember back a few years ago, I had them come and present. That was a newer role that wasn't present in Wall Lake for a very long time. So bringing back roles like that, having people that can help build the capacity of teachers at the classroom level for intervening and supporting students. And those are the kinds of things that are really important as a system. So I think just kind of keeping, keeping your eye on on the supports that we need to continue to build those those layers of support in for our teachers too. But I will take that back to the team. I do have a meeting with them tomorrow. I'll be happy to to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question, a couple of questions, actually. So can you help us as a group? We fed to everyone here on the board the MYCIP overall document, you know, state document, 80 some pages, whatever it is. So for the people that are sitting here and viewing, can you tell us more about MYCIP? When it went in, what it actually covers, yada, 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 in a simple, not too deep type of overview? And I'm going to give you a second question because I'll give you a little bit of back thought to think on. When we were at Oakland Schools, obviously they had partial presentation. I believe if my memory is correct, it was Leo, is it? Could you, is it possible to integrate that a little bit into this?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Those are both really great questions. So the the MYKIP process was developed by the state. So that's an accountability piece for us before it was called school improvement. And we are obligated to complete school improvement plans as a district annually. But those were suspended during the 2021 school year because of COVID. We weren't taking state assessments. The State Department of Ed was kind of, you know, pausing. They they suspended some of those accountability pieces for districts. But at the same time, they were building this new system of improvement. So this Michigan continuous, the integrated continuous improvement process that they developed is really, they're charging us to look at those district trends and look for what's rising to the surface across multiple sets of data. So really what we've engaged in is what the state has been asking us to do. And they're asking us to report back on those things on a yearly basis. So that's that's just part of that, that accountability piece that we're obligated to make sure that we that we do with with our communication with the state. And then as far as the LEO, the Leo project, so that's the Literacy Essentials Oakland Project. Right before March of 2020, it was around January of 2020, Oakland Schools rolled out a partnership with the 28 districts across the county in terms of enhancing literacy coaching. So that's looking at coaching for K one, two, three. And it was really in response to that third grade reading law that was passed back in 2016, 17. And one of the things that they, as a service agency to us, was to offer training for coaching in literacy and training and reimbursement for some of the cost of having those coaches. So I, I, the team and I were able to take a look at the, some of the funding coming from Oakland Schools and use that to help to support those instructional specialists, right? So I'm always looking for where can I offset any hit to the general fund? I see Mrs. Omer is smiling over there. Because, you know, we want to make sure we 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 protect some of these types of positions. And so I I know we talked about this, Mr. Peterson. I would like to have our LEO, our Leo group, come and do a presentation for the board before the end of the school year so that you can really see sort of how right now we have two folks that are engaged with that coaching work at Oakland Schools. And the model that that I've helped them develop is like a train the trainer model. So we have two of our instructional specialists that attend meetings at Oakland Schools. We have a small team of a few administrators and myself that go on a quarterly basis. And we we talk about coaching. We look at some some small sets of data that we collect when it comes to coaching teachers. But it's really a train the trainer model. So while I can't send all 12 of our instructional specialists, I can send two. And then they come back and they help spread that wealth around with the other coaches, with the other instructional specialists that we have at the elementaries. But yes, I thank you for that. I will circle back to LEO. And that is really part of that. Let me fast forward here. Sorry to go all the way back through the slides. But this last piece where we talk about that continuous monitoring and those close data reviews, the coaches are doing that work with our teachers. They're helping to facilitate that. So our teachers aren't going in alone. They have that expert on the side that's helping them. So it's a really integral part. As Mrs. Casa Grande said, what can we do to help to help support this work as a board? It's continuing to support those those positions because those are really vital and critical. As a teacher in a in a building, you want to have that that shoulder partner with you, you know, to help you think through how to address some of those needs.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So next agenda item is a proclamation for Volunteer Recognition Week. Dr. Burney.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do honor individual volunteers as well as outstanding staff members through our Golden Apple Award Program. But we feel it's important to honor the legions of volunteers we have working through the schools each day of the school year. And so we designate a week for that. My favorite group of volunteers is obviously the seven of you. But I do appreciate all the other volunteers throughout the district. The proclamation reads, "The week of April 22nd through 26th, 2024 has been designated Wald Lake Schools Volunteer Recognition Week to recognize the excellent contributions of all volunteers throughout the district. And whereas the volunteers of Wald Lake Schools are an outstanding group of volunteers, each and every one of them essential to maintaining the quality education we offer our students. And whereas although the Board of Education has honored volunteers on an individual basis during the year, the other devoted and dedicated volunteers in the district have received little formal recognition for their distinguished service. And whereas our volunteers are highly valued members of the Wald Lake Schools family, now therefore, we, the members of the Wald Lake Schools Board of Education and Administration, hereby proclaim April 22nd through April 26th, 2024 Wald Lake Schools Volunteer Recognition Week and thank and congratulate all our school district volunteers for their excellent contributions to the education of the students of the Wald Lake School District."
Very good. So we'll move on to public commentary, a couple of little fine points just to remind everyone that we do have a timer up on the wall. We will kind of oversight you. We will put you on a 30 second, at the last 30 seconds mark. Other than that, we'll get started. Tim Sawmiller.
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. This month, a few miscellaneous observations. When I hear people say that teachers and schools are woke, I hear them saying that your children are learning the truth about our nation's history and are learning to be kind and welcoming to all of their peers. And I have questions about why that's uncomfortable to you. Slavery was the cause of the American Civil War. It is cited in seven state declarations of secession. Did you know that nearly 100,000 white Southerners volunteered to fight for the Indian side? In fact, it was the Alabama Cavalry who flanked for Sherman on his march through Georgia. Unlike their neighbors, these men accepted Lincoln's free and fair election. Unlike their neighbors, these men accepted Lincoln's free and fair election, and they fought to preserve democracy. It is currently against the law in Florida to teach these facts. Please do not let that nonsense happen in Michigan. We won't ever correct our past mistakes if our teachers aren't allowed to teach about them. Those who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Those who prevent history from being taught intend to repeat it. So now there's a concern about Western's football lights. There are brighter LED lights available that use less energy, as Mr. Chatfield noted last month. If that's not good enough, why not use that bus money that you declined to spend? At the last meeting, a board member asked about what level of discretion the board has when spending bond money. For instance, can the board choose not to spend money on certain items? Well, apparently it can because this board already declined to buy new school buses, even though they were specifically mentioned in the approved 2019 bond issue. Seems like that was an ingenuous question. The schools that produce the highest academic achievement in the United States today are spending 20 to 30% of their day on the arts, with special emphasis on music. This is derived from testing conducted by the International Association for the Evaluation of Educational Achievement. Please do not neglect the arts and buy some new band uniforms for pity's sake. Finally, everyone thinks they're an expert on schools because they were once a student. But thinking that you know how to teach kindergarten because you were once a kindergartner is like thinking you could direct a movie because you once watched Star Wars. Teaching is an art and a science. It requires a specialized education and years of practice and a big heart. Listen to the teachers. Thank you.
Nancy Van Lewen.
Just a couple of observations. One regarding the bond issue. It's my hope, first of all, I'm in full support of it, but it's also my hope that as we all at the table, in the audience, in the greater sphere, discuss all of this, we do it from fact. I got a phone call from a gentleman who's been in the district for years, does not have a direct association with the school district, but he said, "Nancy," which is the way he addresses me when he calls me on the phone with some urgent concern. "I hear they're closing Geisler Middle School and Wald Lake Central as a result of this bond issue." And I said, as he continued to talk, "No, no, no, that's not in the bond issue." And so they, or someone out there, is just spreading information that they are hearing, and it's inaccurate. And so I hope that, I know that we are working very hard to get this information out and to get the real facts out, but I hope as we proceed with this that we actually do focus on the facts and not spread these rumors. And the rumor about Central, obviously, has been going on for quite a while, even though it's been denied. Central High School is not closing. I was promised that at the last bond meeting. So hopefully, that will be the way it goes as we proceed through this endeavor. Secondly, I noticed that one of the items is an informational item that is on the agenda about some of our school's student fees and things. And I know there's been some concern on some people's parts about raising fees and the costs of some of these things. I would like to remind people that we have organizations within the district that are supporting these students who can't afford some of these fees. Lake City Area Youth Assistance has continually supported students with things like pay-to-play. We've contributed money to camp funds so our fifth graders could go to camp. I know that our local PTAs also have scholarship funds within their budgets where they assist their students who are in need and need funds for various activities around the district. So please be reminded that we do have good support systems in the district that will help our students who can't necessarily afford the full cost themselves. Thank you.
Becky Behrens.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Burnia and cabinet members. My name is Becky Behrens, and I want to just make a few comments about the proposed new high school curricula in economics and civics. I want to commend Mrs. Kohansky and the administration on the choice of these curricula. They are packed with information that appears balanced and reveals the complexities and differences of opinions in these subject areas. I think students will get a good education from studying these. I haven't reviewed yet the proposed math curriculum, but I have read about Singapore math. As you may know, Singapore is the top-performing nation for student math scores, according to a New York Times report published just this past December in 2023. I would hope that if our math scores in the district are somewhat flat and not showing an upward trend, it might be helpful to learn what Singapore has done. It has been said that American math curriculum often spirals through subjects, just covering the surface of them and then returning later, whereas Singapore goes slow and deep, requiring mastery before moving on. I would be interested to get the opinion of the educators in our district on Singapore math. And as you know, I have a special interest in reading issues. Science of reading is clearly not just about phonics. Properly understood, it embraces fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension as well. Our district apparently is doing well in phonics, but having challenges in vocabulary and comprehension. I recently read some comments by a school psychologist who often meets with students with reading problems. What she has found is that many times, these older children, such as in fifth grade, have teachers who jump to the conclusion that it must be a comprehension issue with their reading struggles. However, she said, it often starts with problems with phonics. They are just not able to decode words or even know what a vowel is. If these kids get good at decoding and orthographically mapping words into their brains, they become fluent. And fluency is considered to be the bridge from phonics to comprehension. Again, I will call your attention, I'm beating a drum on this, but I'll call your attention to Lucy Calkins' units of study curriculum, which is being challenged around the nation and which is a curriculum used in our district. When push came to shove, Calkins finally consented to the abundance of research evidence, such that she revised her curriculum in recent years. But many reading experts say it's still inadequate, and their main complaint is that cueing strategies or context clues often distract students from sounding out words. If our approach to phonics is diluted out, simplified, and not robust, I wonder if testing of it is relevant. We should all have a hands-on deck approach to low reading scores in our district. I applaud the efforts of our learning specialist here to have improvement in our scores, which I know, and I'm just almost finished here, and I thank Mrs. Kohansky for that, but I still see in these statistics where 50% of us are not, 50% of the students are not at grade level with their reading. Sports, music, art accomplishments of our students is commendable and noteworthy, but inability to read well is a devastating outcome to the long-term success of kids when they reach adulthood and then struggle to get decent-paying jobs. I thank you.
Gabby Tiagga. I should know, I know her first name.
It's hard.
I know your first name.
I don't even.
For a long time.
It's hard.
So intuition literally means learning from within. Most of us were not taught how to use this sense, but most of us know well that gut feeling. Learning to trust your inner feelings, and it will become stronger. Avoid going against your better judgment or getting talked into things that just don't feel right. I speak of intuition and knowing to trust it because as a woman, that has been my greatest ally in life. It is something my mom encouraged, and it was something I unfortunately, over the years, have had to test to make true. A woman's gut feeling is taught at a very young age, from the person on the playground to interpersonal relationships in school, becoming an adult, and all the situations in between. You ask why I bring this up? I have been hopping around different board meetings in our surrounding district the last few months, and I have learned something significant. Policies or lack of policies made by the Board of Education are like snow days. What one does, the rest tend to follow. I recently was at the Heartland Board Meeting last month, I think, and bathroom policies were a hot topic. Many girls got up and spoke about how boys were allowed in their bathrooms and how they didn't feel safe. This wasn't the first time it was brought up to the board's attention, and yet they were dismissed. Their feelings and concerns were not valid and held no value. That obviously sent me on a bit of a rabbit hole of parent conversations in Heartland, Huron Valley, and most importantly, Wald Lake Consolidated. Seriously, I think in my next life, I might be an investigative reporter. I spoke to so many people, including members of this board, and I learned that there are no policies at Wald Lake regarding bathroom usage, locker room usage, and even down to girls' sports, that everything is case by case when it comes to light. It seems like such a benign topic to be concerned about, but this is not benign in this social experiment that is going on in regards to their bathrooms, their locker rooms, and their sports. It really is just that, an experiment. But we as women and young girls are collateral damage in it all. It is our daughters who are being put in jeopardy by allowing boys to enter their bathrooms, their locker rooms, and taking their spots on teams. When a parent or someone of authority says to a child, "I wouldn't have done this if you weren't bad," it becomes the fault of the child, and that is abuse. Telling our daughters that when a boy enters their bathroom, that they should walk away, that they should just be okay with it. Telling them that they are oversensitive and that they should put their own discomfort aside for the comfort of a boy. It becomes disorientating to our girls, who cannot even trust their own perception of reality. Our daughters, our girls', first line of defense is their gut and their intuition. And for you to tell them to put that aside, you are setting them up for failure when they become an adult. When they are in situations that they know are wrong, they will not trust themselves completely because the adults in the room told them when they were young that they were wrong. Many of my friends, including those in this district, know and understand the type of advocacy I'm teaching my children. I am here today to call upon this board to not be a district of schools, but to be a school district that stands behind the safety and dignity of our girls. If anybody wants to discuss this with me privately, you're more than welcome to reach out, and I will talk with you, and I will help encourage you to speak up. So, thank you.
Christine Titus.
Hi, Christine Titus, Commerce Township, proud educator at Hickory Woods. I'm the instructional specialist there. Number one, welcome back from spring break. I hope some of you had time to get rested and relaxed. Tonight, I just want to talk for just a few minutes about our ELA curriculum. Literacy is near and dear to my heart as well. When I came to Hickory Woods as a fifth-grade teacher eight years ago, we were piloting the unit of study writing curriculum at that time. The curriculum was new. I was new to fifth grade, and I'm not going to lie, it was a lot. But let's fast forward to my second year there, and the reading curriculum was added. By then, I had a template for teaching the units of study, and it was easier. What I really saw, though, was the increase in volume of the writing from my students that had come up from fourth grade to fifth grade, and I attribute that to the curriculum. What I also had that first year was looking at the iReady data and the fact that none of my students, other than perhaps newcomers, had any gaps in their foundational skills, which is the phonics, phonemic awareness, and high-frequency words domains in iReady. By the way, congrats to those students who are graduating this year. I'm very proud to still be able to see some of them. Now, fast forward now to past pandemic and where we're at right now, and our look at data and how that time out of the classroom, it did, you know, impact our learners, and some people would say devastated our learners. But our district wasn't alone in the impact that that had on our students and staff. But we're now a couple of years past pandemic, and out of that, and while I'm not in the gen ed classroom anymore, I monitor student data as part of my role as an instructional specialist, as Mrs. Kohansky mentioned earlier. I was so excited to see that in this latest data that came out in February, for fifth grade at Hickory Woods, I went back and looked at my old stomping grounds, those foundational gaps are once again closed. Now, that's just my building, but to see that happening when there's been so much strife about closing those foundational gaps, that means that what we're doing is working for those kids that are growing up into the levels again. And so my point is, our ELA curriculum, the units of study in reading, writing, and phonics, works. And it's been rough the past couple of years with coming out of everything and getting back to, you know, standard footing there. But I truly believe that with our skilled staff, we're back on solid ground with an ELA curriculum that works. Thank you.
Kathy Kubik.
I'm here again to speak on the bond, but first I want to say those kids that came up and talked today, that's why, that's what makes education so wonderful. It's the students, the great, it's just a joy. And I worked with them for 26 years, and I loved it. It was the students that made it. But I'm talking about the bond because I feel this bond, we do not have to pass. You passed one five years ago for 316, and the reason I talk on this is so that other people who aren't aware pay attention. They're now asking for 250-plus million dollars, so that's over half a billion dollars in five years. And we have four bonds that are, one bond will come due in June, and four bonds after that won't come due till in the 2043, 49, and 50. And this other bond would be in 54, I'm assuming. I think we have great schools here. What I have seen in education is that they come up with an idea, build a wall, do this, and then they tear it down, and then they change things. So I think at this time, with inflation as bad as it is, taxes rising, and we could get a decrease to 2.5 mils if this fails, and I think the students will be fine. I just think that we should look things over more. And what, I just look at the kids graduating, the debt that we are putting on our children. Right now, the government is passing or is printing $1 trillion every 100 days in America right now. And I just think of the debt you put on these kids, it's 30 years of debt for each senior if they stay in the district, if they could afford to stay in the district. So I hope you think about, well, I just hope voters would be wise and say no to this. And it's not the teach, it's not the building, the shiny new chairs that you'll get for them, or the shiny new carpet, or whatever. It's a good teacher, a good curriculum, support from administrators for discipline, make a good education. As teaching, I just wish you would consider teaching patriotism too. I just think that's so important to make them, to teach children the greatness of America. Thank you for putting up with me.
And our last speaker, and he's dear to my heart here because he writes like me, I was going to say, Mike Wise.
Mike Wise, Commerce Township, 23 years. The bond issue vote for the Wald Lake Consolidated Schools is May 7. Please vote yes for approval of the bond issue. As before, I would like to thank the board, as all school board members have supported a yes vote. There are those in this public forum that say, "Don't approve the board issue. Vote against it." They don't know what is at stake. They do not know what they're talking about, nor do they seem to care. I do have, I do not have children attending Wald Lake Schools, so I shouldn't give a damn about the bond issue, but I do, I do give a damn. And yes, I should say, yeah, I have a comfortable home. I have financial security and all that goes with it. Why should I give a crap? Please excuse my crass eloquence. We should be all in for financially supporting Wald Lake Schools, our students, teachers, and administrators, and our Michigan public school system in general, and especially Dr. Burnia. Some of the most important reasons for approving this bond issue, which I never brought up, are our students. Safety is number one. Passage of this bond issue will allow the district to upgrade school video surveillance, update existing door systems throughout the district, allow better emergency responder systems, and hardening of school buildings using up-to-date technologies. Technology improvements include new video/audio systems for classrooms, improved fiber-optic networks, and better high-speed internet connectivity. There will be many brick-and-mortar upgrades to our school buildings. Wald Lake Schools needs to compete with other school districts. For homeowners... Wall Lake Schools needs to compete with other school districts for homeowners and their children, their students, for enrollment. People have choices where they live. Some that come to this podium do not understand this. As a homeowner who's lived in Commerce for 23 years and has been a commercial and residential appraiser since 1978, I know what positively and negatively impacts property values. One of the major indicators of a home's value is the school system. I want my home's value to be stable and increase faster, and by more than those in Novi, West Bloomfield, South Line, and Farmington Hills. Those that come here and talk against approval of the bond issue are ignorant of the ramifications if the bond issue is defeated. If the bond issue is defeated, it shows that some have a definite lack of intellect, lack of understanding, and a lack of gray matter. I grew up in Birmingham and Farmington Hills, and my school friends would refer to Wall Lake, Commerce Township, Wixom, and the general area as Waltucky. They don't anymore. I'm proud to say that I live in Commerce Township, and that my home is in the outstanding Wall Lake school system. I want the younger generation to be safe in their classrooms and to receive a top-notch education, and I want my home's value to stay strong and to increase. This anti-public education element wants to make public education in Michigan weaker and the Wall Lake schools less desirable. Protecting our students and teachers and our property values by having a strong, respected, desirable, and sought-after school system is important to me, and I hope to many of you, but evidently not to some that come to speak here. Thank you.
All right. Next agenda item is administrative commentary, Dr. Bernia.
We will begin tonight with Mrs. Omer.
Nothing. Thank you, Dr. Bernia.
Mr. Russo?
Nothing for me this evening, sir.
Mr. Chatfield?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Muir?
Nothing for me, Dr. Bernia.
Oh, looks like it's all coming back to me. Mrs. Kohansky?
Nothing tonight, thanks, Dr. Bernia.
Mr. Dergan?
Nothing for me, Dr. Bernia.
And Dr. Lons?
Clean sweep, sir.
Then I'll do it for everybody. First, I want to recognize and thank the support staff that was here tonight and the students that were here, certainly from Wall Lake Central, and then the award we saw tonight from the Girl Scouts. You don't get to see that every day, so that was nothing but tremendous. The last few speakers did mention the bond. We were out and about talking about the bond, and I hope everybody's making themselves familiar with the proposal and making sure that you're either attending one of our forums, going to our website. If you can't fall asleep one night, I made a video you can watch. And, but please make sure, you know, I think that what we've tried to share informationally is that this is a massive decision about the future of the district, and it belongs to the community. And so, we're asking you to study up and to give us some guidance on what you want to see for the future of your school system, so please study up on that. And we will be, as I said, we have community forums, we're visiting municipal government meetings, we're visiting PTSA meetings, we're visiting staff meetings, and so I really want to thank my team for going above and beyond. They have their everyday job, and then we're out and about talking throughout the community. Something else that we're doing right now that I want to make sure the community knows about, we visit every school every year as a team, and everybody from cabinet brings their individual lens, whether it's academics, special education, facilities, school safety, human resources, and finance. And we really, we go school to school and spend time in each and every classroom and talk with the principal, and really kind of stack up everything that we see, and then Mrs. Kohansky takes that and works with her team, and we all kind of work on the results of what we see. But, you know, that's extra work for my team, so I really appreciate their willingness to do that. Tonight on the consent agenda for your consideration is the retirement of Chuck Froning, Kristen Froning, and Kathy Russell, who are three of our absolutely most exceptional principals in the long history of Wall Lake Consolidated School District. I call retirement in our profession the endless summer, and so the endless summer has called to them, and they have said yes. And so, we wish them nothing but the best in retirement. And lastly, to close out my remarks, tonight, or today, rather, is my daughter Micah's eighth birthday, so I want to close by wishing her all the best. Happy birthday, Micah.
Okay, we'll move on. Next item, board commentary, and we will start with Ms. Fernandez.
Oh, my. I didn't have anything in particular, but the bond is an important issue, and I appreciate everything that our district is doing to make information available and absolutely echo some of the things that were said at the podium today about seeking out the facts and trying to be informed about what really it is and what it really isn't. And I can, I just feel compelled to say, I hope that in this community, we seek the facts and make decisions on our own, rather than rely too much on making pleas that one response or one vote is ignorant or uneducated. I like to see people use the resources that are out there, so please do, and become informed, and yes, state your, make your vote. It's important to our community.
Mrs. Kascandee.
I wasn't going to say anything today, but I got to the board table, and I had this envelope, and inside it is from Mrs. Smith's class. I visited Mrs. Smith's class for March's Reading Month, and we talk about why do we do this stuff, and it's about the students. I can hardly wait to go home and read this, but there's a picture of me reading to them, and all of these little sticky notes from our students. And I usually, if I get one of these, I put it in my home office, and I have it there as I can look at it every day. But the students in Mrs. Smith's second-grade class were so attentive, they had so many questions afterwards, and this is why we do what we do. And I just wanted to thank Mrs. Smith and her class for being so open and welcoming, and for all the students who had so many great questions. It was wonderful, and I thank you, unexpected, but absolutely thank you.
Mrs. Levin.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. There's a lot going on right now. It seems like we are riding a freight train right toward the end of the school year. Graduation is just two months away, and I myself have been keeping very busy over the last month or so. But before I get into what I've been doing, we're celebrating para appreciation day this week and librarian appreciation day this week, and those are two very important roles. And thank you for the people who fulfill those roles, and, you know, we owe our thanks to you for keeping our buildings running, especially the paras that are in the classrooms every day and the paras even that are in the library every day. So thank you to those groups. I also visited some classrooms for March's Reading Month. I took one day and visited seven different classrooms, so that was a long day of reading. I was at Oakley Park and at Commerce Elementary, and it was great to be with the kids. I was with kids from kindergarten through fifth grade, so certainly a wide variety. But they're all very excited. They love just having people there helping reading, especially being back at Commerce Elementary, where my own kids went. You know, it was good to see a couple of parents in the school helping out. Would love to see more parents in the school helping out. I know that helps teachers, especially when they can pull a student out to help them with reading or whatever they're working on, so the whole class can move forward. So, you know, if you're still looking for ways to be involved in your kid's school, please, reach out to the teachers, reach out to the principals. Don't wait for them to ask you. They're busy. Ask them. Offer something specific, offer a time, and see where and how you can help. It's how I got involved, and it's so important to the schools. The kids love seeing their parents there, and, you know, there's nothing more important than working with our future leaders. So in addition to being at the schools, I was at the reflection ceremony. So much talent in our district, like unbelievable. It's really amazing what these kids produce every year. I was at the community information meeting at Commerce Elementary, and it was a packed house, which was great. And the thing I want to say about those meetings is, it's the only time, really, that people are getting two-way communication. So Dr. Bernia did our presentation. Different cabinet members will be doing different presentations, but if you have a question, it's getting answered right then and there, or being added to, and/or being added to the FAQs documents. So this is not, this bond issue is not supposed to be a mystery. It's not supposed to be based on rumors, or I heard this, or anything. Go get yourself informed and get your questions answered, get your rumors squashed, and really just make an educated decision, whatever that decision is. I was also at the incoming freshman meeting at Wall Lake Northern, so yes, that means my kids will be coming back to Wall Lake next year, so we will be knights. And, you know, I have to give kudos to Mr. Diamond and his team, because I also attended a freshman meeting, parent meeting in another district, and it was not even a question. When we got home, my kids were not surprised when we sat down and talked about where we were going to end up. It's just amazing what Mr. Diamond and his team are doing at Northern, and the emphasis on academics and leadership and the parental involvement. You know, we were in the huge auditorium at Northern, and it was full, where at the other school, we were in a small auditorium that wasn't full. And when we talked about academics at Northern, it was, you know, dedicated time for each academic area, and parents could go and have a dedicated discussion for 15, 20 minutes about that topic. At the other school, it was a poster board. And so, it's just, be very proud of what we have going on here in Wall Lake. I know that I am, which is why I'm bringing my family back here. And, you know, I'm looking forward to several years from now, handing my own kids their diploma. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Mr. Siegler.
I had the pleasure of sitting with a group of seniors this past week, and I say that because I was the youngest of the group. And we were talking about, you know, the bond proposals and everything else, and, you know, this was a group, some of them were former educators, but they really had a lot of questions. They wanted to know who, what, where, when, and why. And then one of the individuals looked at me and said, "We want to thank you." And I said, "For what?" And they said, "Because the schools welcome us. They welcome us to activities, they invite us to come to plays, they bring programs into our facility, and we are blessed by what we have in the community." And I sat there for a second, and I reflected, and I, you know, I had this really warm, fuzzy feeling, and I looked at them, and I said, "You know, thank you for doing what you do, because, you know, you're the ones who are bringing your grandchildren here, you're the ones who are keeping your families here, you're the ones that are helping us go on." And, you know, I've always said, you know, our name is Wall Lake Consolidated Schools, but I really believe it's Wall Lake Community Schools, and just, again, reinforce what we're doing, why we're doing it. You know, we have a very important vote coming up in front of us, and we have to do what we feel is right for the community and what is in the best interest of the community. And hopefully, we will have passage and continue to grow and offer to both our young students and our older residents the opportunity to have a solid foundation within our community.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Well, I'm going to keep it lighthearted, because it's the kind of mood we're in. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations to all of our award winners tonight. Very impressed, very impressed with our Girl Scout. It takes a lot of courage and strength, and I think as a community, we need to reflect on what she did and take that upon ourselves, to think about what we should be doing as a community. I want to encourage everybody to go see Wall Lake Central's final musical performance this year, which will be the Drowsy Chaperone. It's next weekend at Wall Lake Central. I believe we have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and a matinee on Sunday. It's the last one for the school year. It should be a fantastic performance, so I encourage everyone to go see that. And other than that, welcome to spring, I think.
I got a few comments. Right before break, I was lucky enough to have a Wall Lake Western four-peat, and no, I didn't experience four championships in a row. But I did experience four days in a row for four different events, which I all call champion events. So I started out the Friday before and was a volunteer for the Adult Transitions Program Friday Night Spring Dance. Over 50 of our young adults and parents and all attended. It was just, it was just unbelievable. I've never done one of those, and I was just amazed by it. The following Monday, we had our reflections at Wall Lake Western this year again, and again, as Ms. Levin stated, the participation of students from elementary to high school in all different areas is, you have to see it. I can't tell you, you have to come and witness it. So their writing skills, musical skills, dance skills are just above. So, and then the following day, I was back to Wall Lake Western again for a CTE advisory meeting. And I will say that after attending those for a couple of years now, I think there's a greater optimism with them. The CTE program is highlighted right now. We talk about the bond and the importance of the bond to really enhance that program and programs throughout the district in such a way. So let us not remember that just last month, we talked about the percentage of students leaving our district when they graduate that may not go on directly to two- and four-year college. I can't let you forget about that. It's equal to 40% somewhere in that area. So the CTE program enhancements, and that's labs, and if you go over to Oakland Schools and look at some of the programs there, to just put those programs in place here, whether it's in, you know, the medical profession or some of these other areas, it takes finances to do that. There, I think, is, like I said, the optimism was good, very high, and they're very hopeful that we can get those enhancements and start that process. The following day, again, back to Wall Lake Western again, and visited for the Unified Sports Basketball Game midday, part of the Inclusion Week activities, as obviously the central kids had mentioned earlier. If you haven't seen the video that's on the Facebook and some of the other medias of just some of the excerpts of that event, you need to watch it. It was mind-boggling, to say the least. The sounds, the, these young people have never really probably experienced this type of elevation. I don't even know how to explain it. I've seen a lot of things in my life. It was awesome. It was breathtaking. It was, it brings many tears to your eyes at times. The kids were just unbelievably engaged, and the kids that filled Wall Lake Arena, and it was filled, I mean packed. You would thought you were at the second Lions, you know, playoff game, or something greater than that. So that being, that Unified Basketball is completed now, I think, for the season. They're in their second season. We want to thank all the student athletes. We want to thank all the coaches and all the support people that have contributed to that program. We definitely want to support all the student activity groups that support the Unified Basketball Group, and they're there to practice with the kids and to help them out on the court. Just great volunteers, because volunteer is one of the words this particular meeting. Those kids spend that time to be there and help them along. You can't say enough about that. So, and lastly, I went to the Monday night bond meeting. I tried to attend all those meetings, and, you know, Dr. Bernia, the presentation for all of you that haven't been there and should, 15, 20 minutes maybe, the initial overall presentation, and probably another half an hour, 45 minutes minimally of, you know, exchange questions. And sure like to see more of you come out. As Ms. Levin, I think, pointed out, it's a great time to have those questions immediately answered, or answered in a pretty systematic way. We have a couple of more coming up when it comes to the community meetings, April 11th at Walnut Creek, and April 16th, again, at Western, my favorite, Western High School. So we'll move on from there, and we'll move into the consent agenda. So tonight, we have approval of minutes. We have both for the special board meeting of March 7, and the proposed minutes for March 7 regular meeting, personal recommendations, new hires, personal recommendations, retirements. We have the financial reports from February 2024, disbursements in the amount of $19,907,373, balance sheet and statement of revenues and expenditures, unaudited, and investments schedule, and our Head Start Director's Report. So we'll move on. Look, you had to be quick.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So we'll move on to our next agenda item, our first of our textbooks, middle So, we'll move on to our next agenda item, our first of our textbooks, middle school math textbook recommendation. Dr. Bernia.
Mrs. Goansky.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bernia. As members of the Board of Education know, I'm just reading the recommendation for tonight. You have 30 days to come and take a look at those resources and look over them, and we'll be asking you for a vote to approve the recommended materials at the May board meeting. So, middle school math, our current middle school math curriculum, Lapin G. et al., CMP 3 Connected Mathematics, Pearson by Savas 2014, was adopted and purchased in 2015. This curriculum no longer aligns with our Michigan Department of Education mathematics standards. Based on the results of the examination of available curriculums, it is the committee's recommendation to adopt Anderson G. et al., CPM Inspiring Connections, CPM Educational Program 2024. This curriculum is aligned to the updated Michigan Content State standards. The plan for implementation includes a roll-in of this curricular change. So, sixth grade will start in the 2024-25 school year, followed next year by seventh grade, and then eighth grade in the 2026-27 school year. The cost of the sixth grade curriculum materials will not exceed $153,642, and includes all teacher and student materials, online access, and shipping. The process has been endorsed by administration, and a motion for approval of the textbook purchase will be presented at the May 2nd, 2024, regular board meeting.
Okay, and our next agenda item and the next book is high school economics textbook recommendations. Dr. Bernia?
Right back to Mrs. Goansky.
I have a few of these to go through, thank you. The current high school economics curriculum, O'Sullivan, Arthur, Stephen M., Sheffrin, and Grant Wiggins Economics, Pearson Prentice Hall 2010, was adapted and purchased in 2011. This curriculum no longer aligns with our 2019 Michigan Department of Education Social Studies standards, nor does it align with the C3 framework based on the results of the examination of available curriculums. It is the committee's recommendation to adopt Van Fossen Philip J., Econ Alive, The Power to Choose, Teachers Curriculum Institute, TCI 2020. This curriculum aligns with Michigan content standards and incorporates financial literacy instruction per the new MDE graduation requirements, which will be coming up for our next year's freshman class, that is, the graduating class in 2027. The cost of the curriculum materials will not exceed $57,042, and includes all teacher and student materials, online access, and shipping. The process has been endorsed by administration, and a motion for approval of the textbook purchase will be presented at the May 2nd, 2024, regular board meeting.
And our next board agenda item, another book, high school civics textbook recommendations. Dr. Bernia?
Mrs. Goansky, it is your night.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. And last but not least, high school civics. So, the current high school civics curriculum, Bentley J. H. and Ziegler H. F., Traditions and Encounters: A Global Perspective on the Past, McGraw-Hill 2008, was adopted and purchased in 2009. This curriculum no longer aligns with our 2019 Michigan Department of Education Social Studies standards, nor does it align with the C3 framework. Based on the results of the examination of available curriculums, it is the committee's recommendation to adopt Hart Diane et al., Government Alive, Power, Politics, and You, Teachers Curriculum Institute, TCI 2020. This curriculum is aligned to the updated Michigan Content State standards as well as the NCSS standards and is consistent with the C3 Arc of Inquiry framework. The cost of the curriculum materials will not exceed $57,042, and includes all teacher and student materials, online access, and shipping. This process has been endorsed by administration, and a motion for approval of the textbook purchase will be presented at the May 2nd, 2024, regular board meeting. Thank you.
And next agenda item is equipment usage requests for Memorial Day Parade. I'll give it to Dr. Bernia.
Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. The Wall Lake Schools Transportation Department has participated in the city of Wall Lake's annual Memorial Day Parade for many years. The Wall Lake Dean Transportation Bus Drivers drive a bus or buses in the parade procession, which provides a good public relations opportunity during this highly anticipated community event, as well as bringing smiles to the drivers and the children they pass candy out to. This year's Memorial Day Parade is on Monday, May 27th, 2024. Administration supports participation by the Wall Lake Transportation Department and allowing them to use up to two buses for the parade. The Wall Lake Dean Transportation employees will donate their time to drive the buses in the parade and clean them afterwards, and we have a motion for your consideration.
Ms. Kaplan.
I move that the Board of Education approve the request of the Transportation Department to use up to two buses in the City of Wall Lake Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 27th, 2024.
Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Peterson.
Yes, Ms. Kaplan.
I just want to say, Mr. Chatfield, this brings such joy and wonderfulness to our community, the parade. If you haven't gone to watch Memorial Day Parade, the kids are so excited when they see the buses, they're so excited when they see the whole parade, and I appreciate that, you know, we're able to do that.
Do we have any other discussion? We'll move on to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven zero.
Six.
Six zero, excuse me.
Yeah, we're missing Miss Tyce.
And our next board agenda item is board policy adoption, and turn that over to Dr. Bernia.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. The updated policies came to the board for first reading at our last meeting, between our last meeting and this meeting, there was a very good board question about a Supreme Court case and how it interfaced with Board Proposed Policy 8009. After review with legal, it is my recommendation, and I have the support of the policy subcommittee to recommend to all of you that we hold off on that, and so, I've removed it from the packet for tonight, and we will go back to work, bring it back for a first reading again, and then bring it back for approval at a future board meeting. So, the policies that you have, there were initially four, and now it is down to three for your consideration this evening for adoption.
You choose, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Siegler, or I get to read it?
Well, you can read half, and he can read half.
No, we just need, we just need one. All right. I move that the Board of Education adopt the updated board policies as presented.
We have any discussion? We'll move on to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Six zero. And our next board agenda item is board policy administrative regulations update. Dr. Bernia?
Yes, Mr. President, this is not required board action, but does, is something that I bring forward. It is an update of our fees, and in addition to that, Dr. Lons has worked with our legal department, and they have made a recommendation to create specific forms and specific regulations for our eighth grade Washington DC trip, so you see that update for you in front of you this evening.
Okay, and our final board agenda item is board subcommittee assignments. So, to, for those of you that are not aware here in the district we're reviewing, we have always had the opportunity to have a series of committees within the board. So, obviously, we are reconvening the Board Superintendent Evaluation Committee. We're asking Mrs. Levin, Mrs. Casgrande, and Mrs. Kaplan, and Ms. Kaplan will give the lead role to part and parcel, because number one, the state has changed the evaluating process, not only for superintendents, but throughout the entire district. That all goes into effect July, the 1st of July. So, that's the first, and then, the second, we are creating a first of a kind for this board, a 2024 Bond Allocation Committee. That committee will consist of Mr. Siegler, Mrs. Tyce, and Mr. Peterson as the chair. This is to prepare for the favorable eventuality of a bond vote, that the board will be involved. We will be in accordance with our Board Bylaw 6000-002. And for those that are not familiar, we talked about bylaws. We still have our existing bylaw committee, which is in effect, which cheers with Mrs. Fernandez, Mrs. Kaplan, and myself. So, we'll move from there, and we'll move on to adjournment at 9:13. Thank you.